Please rise for pledge. By allegiance to the pledge of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please call them all.
Councilmember Erby?
Here.
Councilmember Page?
Here.
Councilmember Wassinger? Councilmember Gray?
Present.
Councilmember Dolan?
Here.
Councilmember Tracus?
Present.
Councilmember Harder?
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a call.
I move for approval of the Journal of the Meeting of July 18th, 2017.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The July 18th, 2017 Journal is approved. We have no bed openings this evening, so remove the communications.
Mr. Chair, there are no tax compromises or zoning matters this evening, so I'll move to road and bridge matters. Under road and bridge matters, item number one, First, Second, and Seventh Districts.
Receive filed plans, specifications, and detailed estimate of costs be approved, and the Director of Procurement be authorized to advertise for bids pending federal highway administration authorization as requested, and a copy of this report be sent to the interested parties. Same motion for item number two.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number three, Third, Fifth, and Sixth Districts.
Receive filed plans, specifications, and detailed estimate of the costs be approved, and Director of Procurement be authorized to advertise for bids pending federal highway administration authorization as requested, and a copy of this report be sent to the interested parties.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number four, Sixth District.
Receive file on the streets be accepted for maintenance as requested, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number five, Fourth District.
Receive filed plans, specifications, and detailed estimate of costs be approved, and the Director of Procurement be authorized to advertise for bids pending federal highway administration authorization as requested, and a copy of this report to be sent to the interested parties.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Moving on to other communications, Mr. Chair. Item number one.
Receive file on the County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number two, all districts?
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number three?
Receive file on the County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number four?
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number five, Seventh District.
Receive file on the deposit agreement and subdivision plat be approved as recommended.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number six, First District.
Receive file on the County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and a copy of this report be sent to the city of Page Dale.
So ordered.
Item number seven?
Receive file on the County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number eight?
Same motion, and that will be the order.
Item number nine?
Receive and file, same motion for number ten, and that will be the order.
Item number eleven, Fourth District.
Receive file on the County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. Please read the add-ons.
Item number one, Second District.
Receive file on the County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number two, Fourth District.
Receive and file.
So ordered. Report to the county executive.
Nothing further this evening.
No special committee reports yet, so we'll move to public call.
We have, I believe, fourteen speakers this evening, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Tonight we have fourteen speakers. When your name is called, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Thank you, First Speaker.
First speaker this evening is Diane Perry.
My name is Diane Perry. My address is 1290 Purcell Avenue, Page Dale, Missouri. I'm coming with a concern when I saw on the news, and it's regarding the St. Louis County Police, when their job is to go and do with the MetroLink, cover individual citizens, watching them. What I saw on the news, I didn't like. I didn't like seeing a room where the policemen sit around, because they haven't been on the platforms, because I have passed and I've seen them in their cars. I think that's very disgraceful. I didn't like seeing the paper put up to cover the camera. I'm very upset, because if there had been black officers, they'd be fired on the spot, it wouldn't be nothing else said. But I don't know what you're going to do to these gentlemen, but I really think you need to do something, because I see a black and white situation here in the county, not just with St. Louis County Police, but with the different other cities also. But I really think we need to address this, because it's really a great concern. The NACP will be looking into it.
Thank you.
Next speaker is, I'm not sure of the first name, maybe Shawn Hurwig? Actually, Mr. Chair, may I ask the speaker to, I'm sorry, tell us her first name?
It's Shan Hurwig. Shan, is that Nancy?
Thank you.
My name is Shan Hurwig, and I am the former president of the South County Police Business Association. Briefly, I would like to say that I am a hundred percent support of Chief Belmar. His leadership abilities are quite evident in the manner in which his officers and staff protect and serve our community in a very professional manner. Chief Belmar exemplifies lead by example. I want the chief and his staff to know that I am one of three representatives of the South County Police Business Association here this evening, and we speak for our entire association. You have our total support and highest regard.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Keith Brooks.
I'm a resident and business owner in St. Louis County, and I wanted to, this evening, give my support to the St. Louis County Police Department and Chief Belmar, and extend my appreciation for their service to our community. I don't see any issues in my community where it's diverse as it relates to black or white, whether it be citizens or officers. So I pledge that support to the chief, St. Louis County Government, and appreciate all that they've done for our community. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next speaker is Teresa Jones.
My name is Teresa Jones. I'm a resident of Crestwood. I grew up in Richmond Heights and attended MRH High School. After college, I moved to Georgia and lived in Atlanta for forty years. I moved back to St. Louis in time to vote against Prop P. I voted against it because it was too vague. Something this big and this vague would never have made it on the ballot in Georgia, but here, it is eighty million dollars for police and public safety. I have a copy of Chief Belmar's suggested budget, and I strongly support many of the items he has listed, especially increasing the salaries of our police, the jail employees, and body cameras. My concern is with the transparency. As you move ahead with dispersing the funds from Prop P, I will expect an accounting of how the money is spent, and I would also hope that there will be some manner of obtaining input from us, the taxpayers, as to how we want that money spent. I, for one, would like to see much more money spent on training. Training to de-escalate a situation so as to save lives, crisis intervention training, how to catch a thief without involving a car chase, how to build rapport with a community that they patrol. My other concern has to do with the term "public safety." To me, this term applies to infrastructure as well as policing. There's nothing in this budget to cover things like improved crosswalks, to save pedestrians, improved lighting, or other changes to the environment to make the county a safer place for people. I appreciate Chief Belmar's offer of a suggested budget, but before the money is spent, it is my hope that you will ask us, the taxpayers, how specifically we want that money spent, and then that you will ensure that we are informed of the results. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Diane Burns.
Good evening. My name is Bob Burns. I'm a lifelong resident of St. Louis County, sixty-nine years. I thank you for the honor to come before you and speak. I've worked with several of you before. In fact, I was a colleague of Rochelle Walton Gray in the State House of Representatives. I firmly am a supporter of Police Chief John Belmar and our St. Louis County internationally accredited Police Department. I have felt so strongly about them that I belong to the Backstoppers. I also belong to the Master's Program, which is the Backstoppers for the State Highway Patrol. I want to tell you what disturbed me about the news. It wasn't about officers putting a paper over that camera. In my union, the Teamsters, that would not be allowed. That's an invasion of privacy in your break room, and that would have been taken out. It would not have been allowed under a contract. I mean, what next are they going to do? Put it in the bathroom? Let's face it, we have professionals here. If you don't think we have professionals, we just buried an officer last year, Officer Blake Schneider, doing his duty, and died in the line of duty. So I don't want anybody telling me that this county police department doesn't do their job. The other thing that bothered me, and I don't, I'm getting a little riled up, because it bothers me when people start sticking their nose into our county business when they have no business there. I saw Vince Shamel last night on the news, talking about firing Police Chief Belmar or asking for his resignation. Where does he get off doing that? If he's so interested in public safety, why doesn't he work on the murder rate in St. Louis City? Keep his nose out of St. Louis County business. And I'm telling you, ladies and gentlemen, we have this internationally accredited Police Department. One night, about midnight, I get a knock on my door. I open it, it was two county police officers, drove by my home and saw the trunk of my car up, and said, "That's a warning sign. We wanted to make sure everything's okay." Part of the district I represent now is LeMay, high crime area, pretty much, and parts of the city. But I'll guarantee you, the residents I talked to are very happy with St. Louis County Police Department and the involvement of St. Louis County Police Chief John Belmar. I've seen witch hunts before, I've been in this business over forty-five years. This is a witch hunt. We are the economic injure to the state of Missouri. Let's don't mess this up. Handle these things, certainly not everybody's perfect. If an officer needs to be disciplined, discipline that officer. But God forbid you would ever ask Chief John Belmar to resign. Thank you all very much for this time, and God bless each and every one of you, and Sam, it's good to see you again. And thank you all. Steve Stinger, I want to thank you for keeping your promise on Proposition P, spinning it on the Police Department. Thank you all, and God bless you.
Next speaker is Joe Patterson.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. My name is Joe Patterson. I am a detective with the St. Louis County Police Department. I am also the president of the St. Louis County Police Association, Missouri Fraternal Order of Police, Lodge 111. I represent seven hundred St. Louis County Police Department officers and employees, many of whom are here tonight. We are aware of recent allegations about county police in a one-sided opinion column. Such unsubstantiated allegations are typical of a publication that has constantly and consistently been driven to create controversy to increase its circulation. Many times, these reports reflect an anti-police agenda and failed attempts to besmirch the St. Louis County Police Department, one of less than twenty police agencies on the face of the planet that have all major functions of the Police Department, internationally accredited through the Kalia Triarch Award. That's the highest level of accreditation a department can attain. There's none higher. Attaining the highest level of accreditation is not possible without the officers of the St. Louis County Police Department working hard every day to protect and serve the citizens of St. Louis County. Admittedly, the story in the local opinion column without any frame of reference or explanation can cause negative perception and may cause some others to jump to conclusions. All we, the St. Louis County Police Association, are asking is that the due process of our members, who may be accused of policy violations, be upheld as provided by law and their union contract. Additionally, we ask for a cool-headed approach to the internal investigation currently taking place, and that individuals don't over-sensationalize. We support the internal investigation, and we will cooperate fully. We welcome an internal investigation. While we admit the optics appear difficult, we affirm that no violation of local, state, or federal law has occurred or has been alleged. This is far from a controversy or scandal. It is a policy violation at most. We would urge that no one use a broad brush and prejudicially condemn our members prior to the completion of this thorough internal investigation. In regards to the laughable assertion that St. Louis County Police Chief John Belmar resigned, we publicly announce our full support of our Police Chief, John Belmar. Thank you all for your time and attention.
Next speaker is Grant Day.
That's Grant Doty at 13051 Thorn Hill in Town and Country. So I rise to speak on the issue of the Post Dispatch article as well, and I rise not to stick my nose in things, but I'm a taxpayer, and so it's my nose, and I have a right to stick my nose in it. I believe there might be a policy violation, there also might be a criminal violation. And so I rise on a few counts. I rise to speak first in support of trust. It's important, as citizens, that we trust our officers when they swear in front of grand juries, or in front of juries, or affidavits, and when we cannot trust them because of what we see are allegations at this point, without them being proven, without the investigation. And so, my second thing is I rise in support of Councilman Page's proposal for an investigation into this matter. It's critical that it not be internal. It's critical that it be external. If we don't take care of our own homework here, we're going to find that the federal prosecutor is going to look into this for stealing federal money. And so it's important that we increase the trust that the people have by investigating completely and thoroughly. Trust is important, and at this point, it's allegations, and if, in fact, there's found to be nothing wrongdoing, then it's wonderful. Chief Belmar and the police officers and the Police Officers Association shouldn't fear an investigation, they should welcome it. I also rise to speak in favor of good officers. I served twenty-five years in the military, and I will tell you that of the hundred percent of the officers in military that I served with, I would argue, maybe ninety percent were good. Ten percent are bad. And you delude yourself if you think a hundred percent of our officers here in St. Louis County are good. It's not true. And if we get to the bottom and find that there are, in fact, bad officers, we need to find out who they are, they need to be disciplined, they need to be fired if found, and if found a criminal, they need to be prosecuted. And I think it's important that we recognize that. By prosecuting and dealing with the bad officers, we increase the trust, and the ninety percent of the officers are ninety-five percent, whatever we may find, that are, in fact, good It's important that we support our officers, but blind support is not what we are to give. And as my elected officials, I ask you, don't blindly take citizens' support for the police. I support the police. I don't blindly support them, though, and when I find something troubling, as I saw on the Post Dispatch this week, it's important that we get to the bottom of it, and we talk about these baseless allegations, let an investigation, whether it be policy, criminal or otherwise, but public, not internal. Again, I support your move today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Boine Smotherson.
My name is Boine Smotherson. I live at 1243 Purdue in University City, and I'm also a third ward city councilman in University City. And I want to just briefly change the subject tonight, and that is, I'm bringing up the Project Clear, MSD's Project Clear issue that's affecting University City. And I've given, and she's passing out a packet that I've supplied for each one of you, and what I want you to know tonight is, I just want you to have that information, and understanding that this will affect, this not only affects University City, but it affects all of the municipalities in St. Louis County. And that is, that on May 22nd, MSD came to University City Government and announced that they wanted to put two large wastewater tanks right in the middle of a residential dense area in University City, understanding that this is not an industrial park, this is not a park, this is in the middle of a residential area. Their proposal requests to take thirty-one homes in one option, twenty homes in the second option, understanding that University City Government, University City residents had never heard of this proposal for the three years that it was planned, and actually, the plan changed in 2016, and they announced it on May 22nd to the council and to the public. Was the first time that we had heard, gotten that information about wastewater tanks. MSD's, the response that they received wasn't favorable, so MSD then scheduled a meeting on June 20th, and in that meeting, they changed and said that we will actually put the tank underground, but it'll stand five feet above ground. Now, understanding that it's still in the same area, when they presented the plan to University City, they told us this was basically a done deal. All we want from you is to choose option one or option two. And again, that's important to every municipality in St. Louis County, because what University City is asking MSD to do, and asking for your support, is that we want to be part of that process. We want to be part of making the decisions that affect our city, and making decisions that affect the residents. So again, the packet is pretty explanatory. In that packet, we've also had help with the NAACP. One of their attorneys has filed a complaint with the EPA looking for an environmental justice investigation. So again, I'm asking for any suggestions and any help, and specifically with you, Mr. Stinger, in reference to the trustees that sit on that board. Again, I thank you for your time. Please review that packet. And again, it's important for every municipality that we are involved in the decision-making that affects each municipality. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Michael Bonvacus.
I am a businessperson and lifelong resident of St. Louis County. My business is in the Afton area, and I'm here to, like many others, tonight, speak in favor of the St. Louis County Police Department and Chief John Belmar. I think I also should disclose my daughter. I have a daughter who's a St. Louis County Police Officer, so I've got some other interests involved here. Don't want to repeat a lot of the statements and opinions already brought forth tonight before the council, but I think, I think the main thing, as a, maybe a forty-year subscriber to the Post Dispatch, over the last couple of years, I keep deciding, gee, should I get rid of the Post Dispatch? I really don't like what they're reporting, or the way they report it. I found it very interesting that a front-page news article that has run for three days is only showing one side of the story. There's not been any attempt to talk to the other side and present a, you know, a full synopsis of what's going on. My opinion, the articles that have been appearing probably should have been in the editorial sections, because they're only showing one side. But I would have, I'm here basically to say, hey, before anybody does anything to chastise or in any way put down the St. Louis County Police Department or Officer John Belmar, please proceed with a full investigation, making sure you have all the facts before any kind of decision or action is taken. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Kasilda Strukoff.
My name is Kasilda Strukoff. I go by Chris. I live in St. Louis County, and I'm here to speak about the proposed city-county merger. I grew up in the city. I graduated from Beaumont High School. I went to St. Louis University Night School. I retired from Amarin, Missouri, in the city. My dad was a custodian at St. Louis University when I was born, so I think, I believe, all of us may have been in the same situation, same experiences, in the city. I would like the city thriving, St. Louis. I think we all would. However, I have heard that those who have been involved in St. Louis city government are saying that declaring bankruptcy is the only thing that will save this city. If that is so, why not take the steps in the right order and let the city declare bankruptcy? Get their house in order, and then come and discuss a merger with St. Louis County. St. Louis County officials were elected to represent the citizens of St. Louis County and what is best for the county. The city's finances are in shambles, and the county should not have to go down with them. Rex Sengfeld may want the city merged with the county for his benefit, but what he wants, and those who are doing his bidding want, is not important. The citizens of St. Louis County and their welfare are what should matter to the elected officials of St. Louis County. I thank you for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Susan Clark.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I wanted to address a couple different topics. First of all, regarding the hearing that was at five o'clock, I heard several things, thank you for allowing us to attend, that I wanted to address. First of all, points were made about the state stepping in to supplement the prosecuting attorney's pension. I would point out that the decisions made about pensions within St. Louis County ought to reside within St. Louis County. That's your call. That's not the state's call. So I encourage you, make your own decisions on that. I agree, Councilman Erby. One job, one pension seems perfectly reasonable. Many of us have pensions that are tied to our social security income. It's not unusual for people with double pensions to have them correlated to one another. Finally, I heard the assertion made several times that the prosecuting attorney is an exceptional and unique position. I challenge that. The prosecuting attorney has a valuable and important position. We'll skip my opinion of the present office holder, but I see no reason why that position should be treated any differently than any other position in the county. As far as Prop P goes, I strongly support the need for transparency in the budgeting process and in the expenditures process. I can't help, I mean, I'm sorry, but transparency, after watching someone put paper up over a camera, is just, well, the irony's a little amazing. We need better training in the county. We need better training in the county. We need better relations within the county municipal departments. And I know some of this funding is going to the municipal departments. I would strongly suggest that there be some way of encouraging those departments to increase training. There was a very ugly episode in Baldwin yesterday or the day before yesterday with a black woman being stopped. Finally, the MetroLink contract. Mr. Stinger, I really think that contract needs to be addressed. I can't believe that, given the importance of transportation within this community, that we've been operating for this long without agreed security contract with the city. So I'd ask you to please get that back to the top of your pile and get it done. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Next speaker is Mark. I'm not sure, I forget how to pronounce the last word. Mr. Chair, if I could ask the speaker, is it L-O-E-H-R-E-R?
Yeah.
Thank you.
My name is Mark Lorre. I live in Kirkwood. I got a couple of things to say. First off, optics. People reading the paper and watching the news, they won't know what Jim Hessel just had to say from next door. In fact, I really don't know what he had to say. And I listened to Jim a lot when he was working with Kirkwood City Hall. But they will know what you say, and they will know what Bob says when he eventually gets around to making his comment, if he gets that two-week notice ahead of time when the next story is published. And I encourage you to make up your mind and think about optics. Because people don't really look at the technicalities of the pension service or system. They just see one guy, two scoops, Bobby getting two pensions, and the schoolteacher Normandy trying to keep kids out of jail while Bob's trying to put kids in jail, making, you know, a tenth of the, what, $170,000 pension, or salary he gets, not to mention the pension. Just think about optics. The optics of somebody getting two pensions, and yeah, he's not technically getting it yet, but he did win overwhelmingly the last five or six times, so he will probably get it. The optics don't look good. Secondly, the St. Louis motto, the county motto, is a city or a county of non-change, and you guys seem to be overly thrilled with that. Whether it's Rex Sengfeld or Tony Messenger, whoever the boogeyman is now, I don't think the idea of, you know, putting our feet down and, this relates back to McCullough, really, and just kind of doing business as usual is a good idea, long-term. So, again, optics. And then also MetroLink, I advise you guys to, let me say this, figure this out. Because Vin Shamel and Chief Belmar, I don't see any good guys here, but I do see a city and county that is desperate for expansion of the MetroLink system, whether that's to Westport, whatever Westport's been in the last 30 years, or a north-south connection. I strongly encourage that. But we want transit expansion. We want affordable and effective transit. And we can't do that, and we can't even bring up the conversation when we have the police department and by-state fighting with one another. And, I mean, the amount of damage that does to the PR for either one of the agencies is tremendous. And it puts real, you know, pressing things like a transit expansion way back on the back burner, further than it probably is already. And I would advise you guys to figure that out because that's your job. It's not Tony's job. It's not Steve's job. Both of them doing a good job. But, again, optics. And lastly, I would like to say, Steve, sweetheart, you done a bad job. Thank you.
Final speaker this evening is Bill Duval.
Good evening, council. My name is Reverend Phil Duval. I'm a little perplexed. I'll start by making my comments that I'm a chief supporter of John Belmar as well. But even as a friend, as I consider him, we have to have candid discussions when we disagree. If you have a loved one and your loved one steps out of line, you still have an obligation to say to that loved one, you're out of line. I've had the luxury of growing up in St. Louis County all of my life, served two branches of the military. And the military training tells me that those who are on watch, those who are in charge, they're held accountable for what the rank and file does. And politically, that's what happens. Now, I was in here in March and April talking about the need for public safety and MetroLink. And there was a lot of arm twisting and political backstabbing. That's what I believe generated the story. Metro is just giving you back what you started. Thank God for the Post Dispatch, even though I don't agree with their narrative either. But we're a one-paper town. And whether we're a one-paper town or not, you're just gonna have to deal with it because we have to live together. Policing changed two years, 11 months, and 16 days. That was the day Mike Brown was killed. It changed. In Minnesota, officer regardless of color just killed a woman. What happened? The chief was fired. Policing is changing all over America, but in this city, for some reason, we seem to be tone deaf. Now about these officers. More specifically, that Hanley Station. And I want to be careful because I don't want to disclose the sources. There should be no reason there's hand-to-hand drug trafficking, and the adjoining municipalities request the county police to assist, and they do nothing. So I'm requesting there be an audit on the St. Louis County Police, as well as those municipalities that I'll share with you at a later date. Let's see if the dispatch calls match the county police responding, and then I want to know whether any self-initiated stops, talk to, any interaction. Because I can't fathom, living in Baldwin, if I reported something and the Baldwin Police asked the county police to come, and nobody does nothing, but in North County? I could probably see that. Seven seconds, I gotta go. Chief Belmar, we want you to come on the radio station Sunday to address your side, just like we're gonna ask Metro. Because we're sick of being excluded from the conversation. If the Post didn't give it to us, then you guys come and talk. No more soundbites. You enjoy the narrative when it's in your favor. The community is sick and tired of not being heard.
No more speakers, Mr. Chair.
This concludes our public forum. Proceed with the introduction of bills, please.
Bill number 186, introduced by Councilmember Dolan, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $20,000 from the Office of State Courts Administrator, appropriating the same for support of the Domestic Violence Victim Advocacy Program, and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number 187, introduced by Councilmember Page, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept grants and program income totaling $8,496,998 to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, appropriating the same for support of the Community Development Block Grant Program, the Home Investment Partnership Program, and the Federal Emergency Solutions Grant Program. Authorizing acceptance of an additional $19,478 from HUD, and appropriating same for the Emergency Solutions Grant Program. Authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents in support of said programs. Authorizing the Director of Planning to Execute Supplemental Cooperation Agreements, Home Buyer Agreements, Home Buyer Regulatory Agreements, and Home Improvement Contracts for the Rehabilitation of Private Properties, and authorizing the Director of Human Services to execute necessary federal emergency solutions grant agreements. Bill number 188, introduced by Councilmember Page, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $50,000 from the Missouri Department of Economic Development, Division of Workforce Development, for support of an equal opportunity officer for programs and services related to the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, depositing and appropriating said monies as set forth herein, and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary contracts or other documents. Bill number 189, introduced by Councilmember Page, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Missouri Securities Investment Program for investment of surplus funds. Bill number 190, introduced by Councilmember Page, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly Incorporated for professional engineering services related to intersection improvements for two entrances to Creed Park, AR-1733. Bill number 191, introduced by Councilmember Trakis, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with HDR Engineering Incorporated for engineering services related to improvements to the intersection of Brevisparax Road and Green Park Road, CR-1289. Bill number 192. Mr. Chair, the county councilor's advice that he has also prepared this bill in emergency form if the council so wishes to introduce it in that form.
Oh, we would accept that. He can distribute it.
Bill number 192, introduced by Councilmember Page, and emergency ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract in one renewal with the Salvation Army for operation of a cooling shelter at 10,740 Page Avenue and declaring an emergency. Bill number 193, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with the Green Power Group, LC, for lease space at Bell Park Plaza for the Spanish Lake Youth Center.
I just want to say, I think there are a couple of errors here. We're looking into it, and I appreciate Human Services, they are cooperating, and we're getting the information.
Bill number 194, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray, and ordinance approving acceptance of donation of $4,500 from Royal Bank of Missouri, appropriating same for support of fees and other items for summer science camp participants.
With this bill, we're going to ask that it be placed for committee hearing. Because, as I mentioned last week, we still haven't heard from the Community Empowerment Officer Diversity. I've asked them. We've called and emailed, and we just had some questions. We actually had been calling about some other issues, not an issue, I'm sorry, about something else, and then this came up. So again, we haven't heard from that department, and so we're asking for a hearing.
Bill number 195, introduced by Councilmember Trakis, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Trailland Incorporated and BBC Corporation for access to a portion of the Grabway Greenway for maintenance purposes. Bill number 196, introduced by Councilmember Trakis, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Metropolitan Park and Recreation District doing business at Great Rivers Greenway for construction, operation, and maintenance of a section of the Grabway Greenway. Bill number 197, introduced by Councilmember Harder for Councilmember Wassinger, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to grant an easement within Unger Park to Missouri American Water Company and McLean Gas Company for replacement of utility mains and authorizing execution of necessary documents. Bill number 198, introduced by Councilmember Page, and ordinance appropriating and setting apart the sum of $1 million from the unappropriated balance of the Water Service Line Fund for abatement of lead in water service lines. Bill number 199, introduced by Councilmembers Walton Gray and Page, and ordinance amending Title I, Chapter 104, St. Louis County Revised Ordinance since 1974, as amended, offices and officers by adding and enacting four new sections providing for the appointment of a Legislative Research Director. I'd like to be it. That bill is introduced by Councilmembers Walton Gray, Page, and Erby. Bill number 200, introduced by Councilmember Trakis, and ordinance amending the St. Louis County Zoning Ordinance and the official zoning district maps by changing the boundaries of the R7 Residence District, the C2 Shopping District, and the C8 Plan Commercial District, approving the application and preliminary plans for the development and amended development in the C8 Plan Commercial District of attractive land subject to conditions, and repealing ordinance number 21,390 PCO9-16, 3623, and 3705 Lima Ferry Road LLC. Mr. Chair, that is all the bills. Can I move on to perfection, Mr. Chair?
Perfection.
Bill number 121, introduced by Councilmember Trakis. Mr. Chair, we have a substitute bill.
Please read the substitute bill.
Substitute bill number one for bill number 121, introduced by Councilmember Trakis, and ordinance approving the application and preliminary plans as amended for the amended development in the C8 Plan Commercial District of attractive land subject to conditions, and repealing ordinance number 15,277 as amended, TC06-JS-17 McManus Construction Incorporated.
At this time, Mr. Chair, I move to the adoption of substitute bill number one for bill number 121.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries substitute bill number one for bill number 121 is adopted.
In that being the case, Mr. Chair, I move to perfect substitute bill number one for bill number 121.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries substitute bill number one for bill number 121 is perfected.
Bill number 139, introduced by Councilmember Erby for Councilmember Page.
Hold on the, please hold on, and this will, and that will be the order.
Excuse me. Bill number 153, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect bill number 153.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries bill number 153 is perfected.
Bill number 162, introduced by Councilmembers Page and Harder.
Please hold on the order of business.
Bill number 162 will be held.
Bill number 168, introduced by Councilmember Erby for Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect bill number 168.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bill number 168 is perfected.
Bill number 174, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect bill number 174.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bill number 174 is perfected.
Bill number 175, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect bill number 175.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries bill number 175 is perfected.
Bill number 176, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect bill number 176.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries bill number 176 is perfected.
Bill number 177, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move to perfect bill number 177.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries bill number 177 is perfected.
Bill number 178, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move to perfect bill number 178.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries bill number 178 is perfected.
Bill number 179, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move to perfect bill number 179.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bill number 179 is perfected.
Bill number 180, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
I move to perfect bill number 180.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bill number 180 is perfected.
Bill number 181, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move to perfect bill number 181.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bill number 181 is perfected.
Bill number 182, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move to perfect bill number 182.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries bill number 182 is perfected.
Bill number 183, introduced by Councilmember Erby. I just want to note that I'm going to go ahead and move for perfection on this. However, if there's anyone with any additional information or input over the next couple of weeks, we're willing to discuss that. Is that Mark?
I was gonna add that I would like, if you could, hold this for one more week so we can have more discussion on this and gather other information.
That's what I'm saying, but I'm gonna move for perfection, and we can still do that.
Okay, as long as, as long as we can have more discussions.
We can have, that's what I said. We can have more discussion.
That's well, if that's the will of council, I'm, I'm fine with gathering more information.
I move for perfection of bill number 183.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Bill number 183 is perfected.
Bill number 184, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of bill number 185.
Second.
184?
That's 184, I'm sorry. 184.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries bill number 184 is perfected.
Bill number 185, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of bill number 185.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Motion carries, Bill Number 185 is perfected. Final passage.
Bill number 158, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger.
I move, uh, to hold, I'm sorry, uh, move to hold Bill Number 158.
Bill Number 158 is held.
Bill number 167, introduced by Councilmember Erby for Councilmember Page.
Um, I move for final passage of Bill Number 167.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, Bill Number 167, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill Number 167 is finally passed.
Bill number 169, introduced by Councilmember Erby for Councilmember Page.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 169.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, Bill Number 169, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill Number 169 is finally passed.
Bill number 170, introduced by Councilmember Erby for Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of Bill Number 170.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, Bill Number 170, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill Number 170 is finally passed.
Bill Number 171, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 171.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, Bill Number 171, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill Number 171 is finally passed.
Bill Number 172, introduced by Councilmember Erby for Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of Bill Number 172.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill Number 172, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill Number 172 is finally passed.
Bill Number 173, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 173.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill Number 173, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill Number 173 is finally passed.
Moving on to resolutions, we have one this evening, Mr. Chair. Resolution Number One, introduced by Councilmembers Page, Erby, and Walton Gray.
Do you read the resolution, please?
Yes, sir. Resolution, whereas public safety throughout the county, including on public transit, is a primary concern of St. Louis County Government, and whereas Bi-State Development, Bi-State employs public safety personnel to protect the public while using MetroLink, and whereas the county executive has promised to commit the resources necessary to ensure public safety on the MetroLink lines in St. Louis County, the St. Louis County Police Department has invested significant resources in assigning officers to patrol MetroLink lines, and whereas most St. Louis County police officers are upstanding people of integrity who put their lives on the line every day to keep our county safe, and whereas recent public reports have alleged that certain St. Louis County police officers may not have upheld the high standards of the St. Louis County Police Department, and whereas public, public confidence, trust, and faith in the St. Louis County Police Department has been and will continue to be impacted by these allegations, now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section 1, the allegations regarding the conduct of certain police officers assigned to protect the public along MetroLink lines should be investigated independently and thoroughly to ensure that county, state, and federal laws were not violated. Section 2, where appropriate to ensure an independent and thorough investigation regarding state and federal laws, the allegations regarding St. Louis County police officers should be referred for investigation to state and federal law enforcement. Section 3, the county executive and the St. Louis County Police Department should prepare a plan to restore public confidence, trust, and faith in the St. Louis County Police Department's ability for, to protect the public along MetroLink lines in cooperation with Bi-State's public safety personnel. Section 4, the administrative director shall send certified copies of this resolution to St. Louis County Executive Stephen B. Stinger, St. Louis County Chief of Police John Belmar, and John Nations, President and CEO, Bi-State Development.
Move to option of, uh, resolution number one.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Um, I'd first like to say that, before I vote for this, that, um, I support this resolution, but that does not, not by any means mean that I don't have faith in our county police department. When I first saw the tape of the police officers covering the, the cameras, I was upset and angry because I felt it painted a bad picture, a few officers painted a bad picture, for our police force, which I know, as the gentleman speaker said earlier, that ninety, ninety-five percent of them are the, the best there is. So my support for this resolution has nothing to do with the quality of police officers that we have. I just feel that we owe it to our citizens to do an investigation, to make sure, uh, uh, to understand why this happened, and to make sure that it doesn't happen again. With that, I vote aye.
Councilmember Page?
Well, as the author of the resolution, I think it sums up my position. Um, I too have the utmost respect for our county police officers and the job that they do. They do literally put their lives on the line. I also support our police chief and what he's trying to do to take this department in the right direction. I do, I do believe that, uh, these allegations are serious, and they do, um, they do require an independent investigation, and I, uh, look forward to following that as it proceeds. And I do hope that, that, um, as we move forward, that we have the opportunity to open a new chapter and learn from this, a new chapter of cooperation with St. Louis County Police and, uh, Metro. With that, I vote aye.
Councilmember Wassinger? Councilmember Gray?
Oh, yes, I'd like to, uh, reiterate what we just said. Of course, I support our police officers and appreciate them. Um, there's, I have friends and family who are police officers, or, and I've had, that have passed away. Um, I too question the, the fact that it is a break room. However, when the public's trust is diminished, or, or they have a question, they're questioning what's going on, we have to address that. It has nothing to do with our lack of confidence in anyone. We have to address what the public has asked us to do, that's why we're here. So with that, um, I vote yes.
Councilmember Dolan?
Um, yeah, I'd like to make a comment as well, and I, I appreciate the comments my other council members have made, and I agree with, um, with the intent of this resolution. Um, today early, we had a committee meeting about police cars, and one of our county police cars was riddled with bullet holes, so it'd probably be, um, totaled. Somebody could have been killed there, could have been a pedestrian, could have been any of us, could have been a county police officer, could have been another police officer. Um, I think that speaks volumes for what our county police do for us. I mean, this was, I mean, just a day-to-day event for our officers. Um, so I do respect them and support them. I also believe that, you know, I recognize that we should look into allegations, but I think we would do that with any department in St. Louis County, whether it be Transportation, Health Department, wherever, and if there's some misconduct or, or employee, uh, mismanagement, then, then they should be dealt with, and I agree with that. However, I do believe that our county police department is more than capable of doing it in a prior investigation because of the political nature of these allegations. Uh, some of these are from a couple of years ago, and a person involved was disciplined. These are things that maybe everybody doesn't know, but there are other, uh, there is another side to this story. So I believe that St. Louis County Police should have the first right, and, and they deserve and have the, the ability. I have full confidence that their internal affairs will look into this, and if they find out they need to go beyond that, I have confidence that they, uh, have enough integrity to seek assistance beyond that if they need to. So I fully support and appreciate you doing this, but I am gonna have to vote no, just on the fact that I don't believe that we need an external investigation at this point, depending upon what we find from our internal affairs, uh, for St. Louis County. So I vote no.
Can I ask, and so you voted no, can I ask a question about this? Who is the, uh, what is the agency that would be conducting the independent investigation that you're all calling for?
I think we'll, um, have that conversation with the police and let him, uh, with the police chief and let him participate in that decision, but, um, I do need that, I do believe that, um, if it is appropriate, that, um, we may have a need for an external review.
Are there agencies contemplated for this review?
I would, again, say that I would like to have a conversation with the chief and talk about what our options are.
Would you vote?
I voted no, and with, with due respect, but no.
Councilmember Trachis?
Uh, if I could have a moment, Mr. Chair. Uh, I concur with the comments of my colleagues. Um, I've said many times that no ordered society can exist without competent and exemplary police officers, and we're blessed in St. Louis County to have just that. In any discipline, police, lawyers, doctors, accountants, there are always bad apples. We're not perfect. Here, based on what we've seen to this point, it looks like maybe something is amiss. An investigation, I think, is warranted, and I think personally, with all due respect to my colleague, Mr. Dolan, I think that the best, most efficient way to deal with this matter is to, in fact, have an independent investigation conducted in conjunction with and simultaneous with the police department's internal investigation. That way, at the end of those investigations, there will be no doubt, and I'm reasonably confident that they'll both reach the same conclusion, based on facts, not allegations, not inferences. So, um, I want to state again that this is by no means in any way, shape, or form an indictment of the St. Louis County Police Department. This is just simply, um, a council doing what it has to do in these circumstances, requesting a, uh, separate, truly independent investigation so that we can have closure once and for all, and I concur with Chairman Page that hopefully we're gonna see a new chapter of cooperation between the, uh, St. Louis County Police Department, St. Louis County, and Bi-State. Thank you, and I vote yes.
Councilmember Harder?
I too, uh, echo the comments of, uh, my colleagues here. We have the best police force in any county in St. Louis County, um, and in the state. We do need to, when these type of allegations do come up, us as a board need to investigate, and an independent investigation is warranted here. Um, we gotta make sure that these issues are not tried in the media, and that is very unfair to all sides, and it needs an independent investigation. If there are wrongdoing, then let the chips fall where they may. If there isn't, then we move on, but we can't let these type of issues be, uh, judged and tried and executed in the media. Uh, there's more to these stories, and as I've found in political life, there's at least three sides to every story, and, um, I think we've got at least that many sides in this case. So we need an independent investigation, let it happen, and let's move on and learn from it going forward. I vote aye.
Chair, on Resolution Number One, there are five ayes, one no, and one absent.
Resolution Number One is adopted.
Moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Chair, item number one.
Hold on the order of business, same motion through item number four, and that will be the order.